Fall the role.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Cameron Diner.
Here.
Rowden Strong.
Here.
Newman, I'm sorry, I keep saying that. Mylum.
Here.
Sorry about that, Dan.
So let's just look.
Here, all right, let's go through the agenda. We do have a proclamation that'll be issued tonight. We also have our public hearing. Counsel on the minutes.
Sure.
Are you good?
Yeah.
I missed it.
Yes. Awesome. All right, resolution two.
I'm sorry, for the minutes, are we doing counsel?
Counsel.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cameron Diner, you wanted this one?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions on it? Comments? Okay. All right, next is resolution three with the ADH.
I think that probably should be counsel.
What's that?
You want to do counsel?
Counsel. Everybody got that?
No, doesn't matter to me.
One, so resolution three by counsel. All right, just by way of an explanation, resolution four creates a committee of individuals looking into opportunities for our members of senior citizen center to meet, whether it be a different location or et cetera. And then this committee will be named by the council, I don't know later than ever after December 31st. Any questions, comments? Yes?
I was curious, I had to get some idea and to bring them in here. I was just kind of curious, do you have an idea of number of members, many as five?
Yeah, I think that's up to us, I mean, I would hope that we get, you know, a huge interest in it, but who knows? So I think that's for us to discuss and we'll appoint the committee and the co-chairs and they can, you know, follow the mission and for the resolution.
And I was just kind of curious too, plans on how long, with the senior center being closed, probably going to the community room or find a way to do it through Zoom?
Yeah, I would think the community room, we can work with the clerks, kind of what days are available. We also consider the financing as well.
And any other qualifications other than being seniors in our community or active members in the senior center as it is?
Anyone who's interested and, you know, in a part of this, I think it's a nice go forward in looking at other creative ways and opportunities for our seniors, so I don't think we should limit it to, you know, one particular class or et cetera, I think we should open it up to anyone who may be interested and jump on this committee if you get by, that's great. Kind of interesting, I know the time on this on this year, so I hope that they can assist in any getting this message out that we're looking for interested residents in the community to take part in this committee and look for creative, innovative ideas where seniors can communicate safely and hopefully make time for that.
Thank you.
I know there was a lot of discussion at our last meeting, I thought this was happy medium to move forward on that. Anything else? Pretty good?
Good to go.
All right.
Good to go.
I'm gonna make a motion to go with an executive session for personnel of the school that person, do I have a second?
Hang on, Madam President, are you sponsoring this one?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think that was, oh attorney, my bad.
It's there, sorry.
Permanently. I am in favor, yes.
You what?
I'm in favor of your motion.
Oh.
I'll say it.
So do I, Mr. Mylum, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you.
He's pointing at me, I wasn't sure he was pointing at me.
Oh, I was gonna defer the I was deferring the second to you.
Hey, for those members that are in the Zoom meeting call, we're going to executive session, and you'll be put in the waiting room.
Thank you. All right.
Don, are you?
Let me know when you're ready, Joe, or Jim.
Okay, we are recording again and everyone from the waiting room has been added back into the meeting.
Okay, perfect. All right, welcome in everybody, Joe, thank you for joining us. I really appreciate you coming out tonight, I just want to introduce you to our team, here we have Mayor Davis. Say your name.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tom Newman, he represents the first ward right there. Councilwoman Dawn Cameron Diner, she represents our second ward. Councilman Sean Rowden Strong, he represents our third ward. Councilmember Dave Mylum.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good, you.
So the floor is yours, we are very excited to meet with you today and we'd love to hear what you have.
I have a handout, that I'm gonna hand out for everyone, it's just basically very simple on my experience and what I'm planning on doing, proposing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me at any time. My name's Joe Colini, I've been in business since 1994. I have multiple businesses, one is construction, general contracting, one is property maintenance, and the other one is build my own commercial real estate to lease out. Under my property management, I manage Mid-City Plaza in North Tonawanda. It's a 210,000 square foot facility. We manage everything from maintenance to meeting the insurance guy there, construction, build outs, demos. The owners are out of town, we basically take care of it from two to the dots. I own 22,000 square feet of mixed-use property under two LLCs, Niagara Business Park and Bulldog Business Park. Niagara Business Park is approximately 10,400 square feet on Niagara Falls Boulevard. Bulldog Business Park is approximately 12,000 square feet in Sanborn. On the second page of pictures shows the Bulldog Business Park. We built that in the last couple of years. It shows mixed use, all the units have bathrooms and heated up. What I'm proposing to do is build a flex space for retail, wholesale distributing, warehousing, and light manufacturing. There's a color picture of what I'm proposing of building over there, Cameron's Park. It's a mixture of retail, office space, and like warehouse space. And that is about it.
So you would lease these?
I would lease them out. We have a, in the pipeline, we have a lot of people that are waiting for, for space. I don't have enough space in my other two facilities. They're looking to rent more space.
No, junk.
Joe, did you just please mute?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
I don't think that was
Excuse me.
How many square feet are you proposing?
I'm proposing, I have a lot, approximately two buildings, each of them around 10,000 square feet. I have rough layouts. I don't have a survey, I would forward rough numbers of the facility. Depending on setbacks and the size in the front and the back would determine on how many units, but I would like anywhere between two buildings, around 8,000 square feet each to 10,000 square feet each.
Now, you were aware that there is a right of first refusal. Summers Crane does execute that right of first refuse alarm, parcel, have you given any thought to any place else in the city that you would like to go because you know, they can pull the trigger.
I would be open to suggestions on other locations that follow similar zoning. I'm interested in this area and doing my next part. If something comes up, I would love to take a look at it, if they take their first right. But I don't have any other properties picked out.
Questions?
I like the looks of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
It's always fitting nicely.
So you're kind of building the space in anticipation of filling it with clients that have interest in, so you don't have anybody specifically?
I have people on a waiting list. I have a I have a certain insurance agent that is looking for something right now, and I have a guy that sells flooring, linoleum, hardwood, tile, small guy looking to expand, small showroom with some little bit of warehouse space for his operation. So we do have, we always have a waiting list of of people, the last project, the Bulldog Business Park, I did 8,000 square feet of it and I rented it up in a month.
The build of it looks, I mean, it looks great, but it seems relatively simple, a simple building, is that what do you anticipate the build time on something like that, if you did put it up?
If I
Starting the bureaucracy of getting to that point, but once it's
Start to finish. Eight months.
Nothing holding, Jim, just kind of curious.
Yeah, ballpark, it just, you know, we've done it so much, we got a system. So yeah, around eight months from start to finish. The paving might be pushed out, so seasonal, and it all depends on the seasonal time I start with some of the underground and the cat creep and stuff like that. But usually eight months we could get the building up, ready to run.
No. Are all the overhead sections, the overhead door six, are those, I'll build the suit so people can take
Yes.
Two or three if they choose?
Yes, what I normally didn't do is, I'll start off with a few thousand square feet and a few 2,000 square feet and go from there, and then the way I build them is, they can be adjusted. They have separate meters, so you could take a 2,000 square foot unit, split it in half, it's got its own electric, its own gas, so you could split the utilities, split into, we build it to code with the fire the firewall.
Very nice.
It is very nice.
Yeah, good stuff.
Thanks.
You know how much you rent the space for ballpark?
Ballpark? The, say, like a thousand square foot warehouse would be around the $700 to $800 a month. The office would depend on how much warehouse they take, would be probably around 1,200 to $1,500 a month for office and maybe a thousand square feet of warehouse.
Do you have questions?
Approximately $7 a square foot, roughly.
Yeah.
Very competitive.
All right.
Very competitive.
Yeah.
Market, yeah.
I'm also. Yeah, I'm good too. Good stuff.
Thank you.
All right, so next steps, we obviously set a correspondence over regarding the right of first refusal. I'm sure they'll be in touch with the city and the city attorney. So we do have to give that some time and then we'll be in touch.
Okay, I have one question.
Yes.
Just ballpark, how long do you think before, I don't want to bug you guys, how long do you think before you hear something?
Mr. City Attorney? I will defer to him and be sent the notice out, the letter.
There has been no notice sent to him.
Oh, no letter.
First step was for him to present, okay, to the council, the council determines the price and fair, if they desire to proceed, then we notify them. I'm assuming that you want us to proceed and send out the notice of the right of first refusal, which we were there for this week. We should give them a reasonable time, a couple of weeks, I would assume, to reply. If they desire to exercise the right of first refusal, they get to purchase the property for the same price that was offered now. It's not a negotiation, it's not a bidding war. Okay, it's winner take all, that's why when I spoke to you on the phone, I said, make your best offer.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's what we have to present to Summers Crane as the right of first refusal. If they decline to exercise their right, the next step would be then we have to publish for a direct sale, once a week for three weeks. So you're looking at at least probably seven, eight weeks down the road before we vote it out.
Councilman, Council President Cook, I checked the contract, they have, Summers Crane has up to 30 days to on the right of first refusal.
Okay, okay, so if we can begin to prepare that correspondence?
We'll get it out this week.
Perfect, and if you just copy the mayor and council on that?
We will do so.
Perfect, thank you. So we will let the 30-day timeframe and go by and then we'll be in touch.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, feel free, think of something, let me know.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was so nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys, bye-bye.
Joe, do you have another copy for our clerk if not, I can give it to you.
Yes, yes.
So Jim, I have a copy of the handout for you as well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, okay.
Do you have our contact information?
I have your contact information. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on. Mr. Newman, do you have anything?
I do not, Madam President, thank you.
Cameron Diner?
I have nothing at all. I can, if you want, or we can talk about it at the end. So I handed you guys all just some information that I had received back regarding the budget for the LDC. We had chatted briefly about cutting their particular budget line. I don't think it would be a good idea to do that, and I only stipulate because as you can see via the email, they use that stuff for marketing materials, to promote the downtown, to eliminate some of our time for the community, we could send some business owners their direction to, for grants, loan options maybe that would be available for them. So I hope that we can all be on the same page and keep that in the budget and not eliminate it moving forward. Because I think it would be ideal to leave it there.
Okay, I just want to comment on that today, I do agree with you, I know we talked about reducing, I know possibly a reduction for a year might be a good idea with everything else going on. But I think with the investments in our downtown, through the group, Main Street, with things building up down there, I think you need to rely on an LDC to continue to build that growth and to create momentum. Last thing we want to do is pull the rug out from under that while we finally have an opportunity to build our downtown, build our business district. But I'm on the fence about it, but I do think it's a worthwhile investment, I think it's we'll see a return on our investment with the growth of our city.
Mr. Rowden Strong?
And I have a couple of things, one, I don't know if Dave has anything else that he wants to bring up, I don't want to hijack the conversation.
No, you're good.
You know, one thing I did want to bring up, I it's okay now. You know, we've been talking about these budgets, we've had the opportunity to speak with our our department heads and just kind of get some feedback, we've all talked about a lot of these things and looked at the budget lines up and down. I gave everybody, I took the liberty of kind of going through the budget, asking some questions to the mayor, to mayor's office, to Chuck, to Bill, just to have a better understanding of each of the line items, what the thought process was going into this and creating the budget. And possibly presenting an idea of coming at this from a different angle. You know, we sat down, we talked with our department heads. Some of the things you've talked about during the COVID and during the budget cuts, you know, they're still relevant now. We talked about our emergency services, it's not something we want to cut. Our department, you know, needs the amount of men, we're relying on their services, their emergency services, medical services that they provide, our police department is the same thing, we want to protect and serve our city. You know, we've heard from the chief how any small cuts can drastically affect revenue and cause more employee loss. And with the DPW, we've talked with them, it's a delicate balance, it's of unknowns that they deal with through the year. For the most part, we don't want to take anything away, we rely on our roads to be kept up in the winter, we live in a terrible area that gets hit by weather. Some years better than others, some years worse, you know, our garbage pickup and whatnot. So, you know, we have to speak with them and kind of get some feedback in from them, I appreciate the opportunity to indulge me a little bit in some of these. When we're looking at some of this, I look kind of to the Parks and Rec Department. Our Parks Director has done an amazing job during the COVID to really help out our city, to help us make these cuts. And it's kind of a double-edged sword, it kind of made you realize maybe, maybe we can look at some heavier cuts in this department and find different opportunities, I don't want to say we're cutting, cutting some of these things on. I went through line, line item by line item, I think we have a very talented and capable Parks Director that could be utilized a little bit better to maybe direct her energies towards other things, if we can take some of the things off her plate, look into the promotion of our city, work in tandem with the LDC, with our downtown, help with the, with events, promote our revenue sources in our city that they've done a great job of and focus on. What I did is I kind of went through here and if you, if you look through to some of their line items, I removed them. I saw what it looked like with the cuts. What I did with a lot of that stuff is kind of said, you know, these things are, we don't know what we're going to be faced with over the course of the next year. We weren't able to open the recreation center, the pool, after-school, day camps, our senior center has been closed. And with interest in that building that I think could be better suited for our Main Street area, I think we need to entertain all these options. At the last meeting when we did talk about some of these line items, it caught my attention, we talked about a contingency line. Well, I'd like to go through and take $150,000 and give it back to our community, to our residents and reduce the tax levy. I think we need to proceed cautiously over the next year, we don't know what we're going to be hit with. I think we can take that and have a separate contingency line item that if things change, if the opportunity arises that that we can open our pools, or we can do something with the rec center, or any of those things, that it's there, but I think the beauty of it is it going into a contingency fund as I understood it is us, the council, kind of have a little more control over it, have a say into it as to whether or not we think it's appropriate at the time. You know, we got months until the summer begins and it starts, I think we kind of freeze those funds and say, you know, let's task our Parks Director into looking to different opportunities, exploring different opportunities. And that's kind of why I wanted to preface this, I know you had concerns about me holding onto this, I just really wanted to preface it with that background before I put it up here. I think, you know, I think there's some opportunity for her to change the direction of her role, and I think there's some time to be able to do that. So that's why I looked at a lot of these column cuts and cutting them from the budget line, but possibly moving them into into a contingency fund, and like I said, I reached out with Rick, I believe, you know, I asked him maybe to address some of this with the Parks Director, just to the last thing I want to do is somebody to be surprised, hearing this on Facebook or hearing it on a recorded meeting, or some people are excited, but to my understanding, Rick said she was on board, not the greatest thing, but I think she can see it as an opportunity to do a little more with her role. So I kind of went through some of these things after we talked about it and, you know, looked at some line and related to that, I think if we, we consider putting some of these lines, if we consider, you know, looking at some of these properties that, that could be utilized better on Main Street, could be sold and have a better purpose on Main Street, you know, in addition to closing or stopping some of those services, we also pick up the maintenance costs and utility costs that are associated with it. And I just think it's something that we need to pursue, and I think by freezing those funds or moving them into a contingency fund kind of forces the opportunity to look into those opportunities, put some of the onus on our director who runs this to maybe find some solutions that you know, I kind of went through some of these other items and I did take the liberty of looking at these deeper, and like I said, I kind of put this out here as a jumping board, I think, I'm guessing, we've talked a little bit about it with Don, Dave, I'm kind of bringing in all of, you know, everybody's conversations into this. You know, we've had a tough year, I think we did pretty darn good managing the budget with everybody's work. Closing some of our programs, saving some money and making some budget cuts, I think our department heads did a great job of that. But I do look through this and those are cuts that I looked at that I think we, we need to consider, we need to make. We don't have the opportunity with our union members, the contracts are what they are, at this point, we haven't had any concessions from any of the union members, at least to my knowledge we haven't. The unfortunate part of it is we're looking, going into a next year with a lot of unknowns and looking at an increase in our tax budget. My suggestion is that for the year, we freeze the pay raises for our department. It's a substantial fund, I don't, it pains me to say that, especially for the job that they've done this year in keeping up with things, but I don't think in good conscience we can, you know, pass on the pay raise to our department heads and put the burden on our residents, our homeowners, who are suffering job losses and time off and reductions in their income as well. It hasn't been a banner year for any of us, and I don't think now is the time to celebrate it. And again, I
If I may?
Yes, please.
So just so that we're wrapping our heads around this, we're taking these reductions and putting them into a contingency budget, which is kind of along the line of what we had discussed, a budget A, budget B.
Yes.
And having a reserve fund. And while, while the tax increase may be more than anybody wanted this year and not knowing what's coming next year, having this extra reserve fund contingency budget, if it's not used this year, it could be applied next year with hopefully a decrease or at least to stay the same.
That's kind of what I'm aiming for, I feel like, you know, we've done a lot of this in the past six months, we've kind of been working towards that.
Yep.
I think if we take the year to make some I think if we take the year to, to make some sensible changes, to reserve some of these funds to ourselves, to our city, um, I, I think we can make for a better situation in 2021. I think that's, that's really where we should be aiming for. I don't want to say that, you know, there's not some room here. I think I, I did take some of that and put it in the contingency fund. Some of the things like the salary line items, um, some of the, I think there's some capital things. I asked, uh, mayor's office in regards to, you know, things like fireworks and some events, uh, if there's some room to move on, move on them. I think these are things that we could probably take at this point. And when I add up the numbers, I mean, I put it up on the bottom. And yeah, it's, it's total of 138,000 in contingency. If that's something we don't have the opportunity to use this year, I think that amount can be rolled over into next year or give us a, enough of a buffer that we're not facing next year with, with a huge hit. I, I kind of tapped on the numbers and, 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 you know, made us realize the 66,589 realization in cuts. You know, when that breaks down, I mean, we're looking at a six and change, uh, budget increases. I think the, if I'm doing my math correct, and I'm an IT guy, sometimes I get my decimals in the wrong place, so I will, uh, add the S to our treasure to, uh, check my math and to give us the exact answers, but I'm, you know, I'm ballparking. That's a realization of almost a half a percent. So it's not huge, but I think it's, 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 it's something that we can pass on to our residents, that we've done our diligence here, that we reviewed this. I, I think that's kind of the direction we, we need to go. And we talk about the seniors, um, and the property, I, I want to touch on that. I think, you know, if, if there's an opportunity there and somebody is interested in it and there's a sale on it. I, I'd like to say, you know, let's do that and earmark some of those funds to, to rebuild some of these programs and, and use it towards the startup program. Whether it's, um, you know, something for the senior center in, in a different location that could be worked on. Whether it's, uh, for parks and recs or it's for some of the events that we want to throw, build earmark for that as, as that happens. I think that's going to be something that's going to happen down the road and we can take advantage of. I, I did take the opportunity to, um, to reach out to Bill Conrad. He's talked about, uh, you know, an underutilized senior program that they have in the town of Tonawanda. I, I'd like to, you know, present that as possibly an idea, something they, they could take advantage of. Mr. Conrad had also mentioned that, you know, on top of that, there's a lot of opportunities for some shared services down the road. If we kind of continue to have our director kind of focus on those and see if there's some opportunity to save our city some money in this process and, and do something with them. I think that's a win for everybody. I think, um, I, I think there's options there that you can explore. Whether it's a rec center, whether it's maybe utilizing the, the rec center in a different manner. And I, I mean, I'm spitballing some ideas, but I mean, there's a, uh, a community room in the, in the fire hall. I, I know it's in use by the volunteers, but is it something that could be taken advantage of? I just think there's a lot of ideas and I think that's a great idea to have the senior committee is to, you know, have some ideas that we run to them and, and kind of have them, weed through them and see what works best for them. You know, we continue to have the van services. That's a, a line item on there. I didn't cut that. We have two van drivers, um, that provide these services to get these doctors appointments to take them to another senior center, to take them to another recreation center. I, I just, I think we can still do, do well for them, but while this stuff is up in the air, we need to, uh, we need to think about it.
And we haven't heard our final tax report yet either.
No.
And, and that's a potential huge hit that we're, we're going to take.
There is a huge hit in that. And I think that is, I think that's something we need to be concerned about. I think we need to have common sense about the budget and be conservative about it. There, we could be facing another loss and we could be doing what we did last year, this year because of the loss of, of funds. It's my hope. I think we have some interesting things in the works, property sales that are, are up in the air. I think that could help with this. Again, offsetting it with, uh, a song 35 Main Street and finding a, a better use for that. And again, I think these are things that can offset some worst case scenarios. But I, I, I do think, you know, as we're talking about these line items and I, I remember Joe Hoben Camp, former treasurer, that we're not going to, we're not going to save the city and reduce the budget with pencils and paper and, and little things like that, that we need to kind of look at a bigger picture. I think these are some bigger picture items that we, uh, we really need to explore at this point.
And my, my only concern is that the cuts or the, the shifts here would, but it, I mean, it's, it's not really even a concern. Uh, the report today was that the, this quarter was down an additional nine and a half percent compared to last year.
Exactly.
And I don't know how that's going to get made up.
Exactly. So, and that's, and that's kind of where the great idea from John, when she talked about an A, B, and a C budget.
Yep.
Well, maybe instead of an A, B, and a C budget, we look at a, an A budget that has a contingency plan in, in place. With some secured items that, you know, they're, they're not going to be easily shifted interdepartmental. I, I thought it was really interesting that this contingency fund wouldn't need our approval to be moved out and then funded into something else. I mean, we look at the budgets and we got a different picture of it when we look at it and we were questioning it, but we look at, you know, there's a $95,000 contingency fund built in there. When we look at last year and the year before and the year before that, that line is reduced because it's the actual. But what we need to remember is some of those monies were taken out of that, what it was there for and used for legal fees, used for something else. And I think it's an important, um, important thing to keep up. And I, contingency is just that. We want to, uh, we want to have a safety net. You know, I, I, I want to be real adamant when we talk about that retirement line. There was talk about maybe reducing. I know you guys reduced it last year. I still commend all of you on, uh, I'm coming through with a tax budget that stayed under the tax cap. That's amazing. But when we're looking at the next four, four years, that potentially losing enough people, that's going to cost us about $2 million, we need to be cognizant that that money is in there to pay for it. And from my understanding, uh, our fire chief had mentioned that that was his intentions next year is to retire. I think there's a couple of other people in the work. I mean, from what I know socially, I think there's other considerations. I, I think there's a potential we could be facing depleting that $525,000 this year, um, and using it up. So I, I just, you know, I, I just want to stress the fact that we need to come across this with, with a common sense, um, a common sense plan. We, we're talking about it now. I think I broke down from Bill's presentation, our treasurer's presentation that he, he presented for everybody. He did a nice breakdown of how much we're paying for all these services. Right now, where it stands, we're talking about the average home being $135,000. The city tax is 2663. Again, if I'm doing my math correct, um, compared to 2020, I think it was 25 to, based on 20, $135,000 homes. That's, that's $160 a year, um, that we're putting onto our residents based on that average home. I don't want to do that either. If, if we can't tighten the belt a little bit, we can't expect them to, to pay more without doing our due diligence. I mean, but when you do consider it, it's not a small amount of money, um, but like I said, we, we've gone through the past year without losing employees, um, continuing to maintain the services for our city and that breaks down to $13 a month. In, in what we're paying extra for the year. You know, he's got a lot of breakdowns about how much it is to pay for our DPW, pay, pay for our police services and our, our parks and rec. I mean, numbers like $131 a year out of that, $26, $2,600 for parks and rec. 355 is, is a year is the DPW part. 325 are, are fire services. 396 is the, uh, police services. Those are big numbers and, and they shouldn't be taken lightly. $160 to some of us is, is, is a lot of money for the year. But when we think about the services that we get and that we continue, I think it's important to realize that I, I think we get a good value for our buck down on the services, services that we have. Maybe even take it and break it down and compare it to something that we can all relate to. We talked about our health insurance. Most of us working in private sector are paying $1,000 a month for our premiums or, or close to that for the privilege of having a health insurance where we're still paying out of pocket until we hit an $8,000 deductible, um, you know? And that's our lives. When we're talking about protecting our homes, um, protecting our suppliers, having emergency services, company of our children and to ourselves. I, I think it's important to consider. And I think we need to stress that point. We're a small city. We don't have a lot of, a lot of, um, options to spread this out. I think that we're moving in the right direction and, and looking at, you know, more of a tax base. And I think we need to invest in that. That's why I stress the fact about the $45,000 line for the LBC. I think it's important. I think we need to look into this. I think there's, there's interest in our community, interest in investing that. And with that will come more people living in our city, uh, more opportunities to invest, um, you know, other opportunities to offset our taxes as homeowners to go on, on larger businesses. And we're, even, um, last year, we're talking about the, uh, schools. You know, the merging of the schools within the next couple of years, we're looking at that. It's a great opportunity too, because there's going to be some additional properties out there. You know, that people will be interested in investing. Need to fix up the house. So people are interested in, in buying these things. But, but I continue to say, we, we've been lucky in the past couple of years with some land sales, some property sales. And, you know, they, they've managed to keep us in a reasonable place. And we're looking at other communities that are going well over what we're proposing for a tax increase. And, and in a worse situation, I think we've managed it well. We've mitigated, mitigated the cost well this year. And, you know, we shouldn't be doing a victory lap about it, but I think we should continue on that path. So I hope we can all consider it. In, in regards to the sales, I mean, we can only rely on so long. There's going to be contract negotiations in '23. Until then, we got to rely on this, but I think we need to move towards, you know, some realistic long-term cuts in our budget. You know, the, it's going to run out at some point and we need to put that in the pot rather than trying to shift things around and add things to other things. So it's a little more comfortable. Hey, you kind of have to elish in a little bit of discomfort and hopefully after another year or so, we can, uh, we can be in a better position. So, um, you know, that's kind of not so much a presentation. I think I included a lot of our ideas that we discussed in this. I think we have some time to move forward with it. Um, I know Jenna put out the email today that we'll need to go next week. But, you know, I, I'm asking you all of you to, to consider these cuts. I think they're reasonable cuts. They're significant, relevant cuts, um, that I think were going to help us over the course of the year. And by moving some of that into a contingency fund, you know, we're freezing it to, to use as it's needed. And if it's not needed or not able to be used, you know, we're not leaving it out there to be used by something else. And, and helps us keep a better eye on it. So that's kind of, kind of where I was coming from that. Again, I wasn't looking to drop a bomb or surprise anyone. I just didn't want to present this to you guys without a, a, a frame of reference on where I was coming from. So thank you for indulging.
Thank you for your work on this. It's good stuff.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your help.
I was going to. And, um, obviously we'll talk about this next week, but you just email us the hard copies.
Sure.
So we get it.
Sure.
I do not. Thank you.
I believe Bill, you're on, right?
I am.
Do you have anything for us?
Am I off mute now?
Yeah, you're off mute, Bill.
Yeah. All right. I'm sorry. It's a little confusing. I'm, I'm watching on my car player. No, it all sounded, uh, very good. I don't, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. All right. Perfect. All right. Then we'll take a few minute break before we go out on the floor.
Okay, everyone that's in the Zoom call, I'm going to be putting you in the waiting room. The meeting, the normal meeting will start at seven o'clock.
You know, when you're ready.
Till closed.
Okay, Jen, everyone from the waiting room has been re-entered into the meeting.
The red just flipped.
Seven o'clock. Let's call the media of the City of Tonawanda Council to order. Please follow the roll.
Newman.
Here.
Jimmer Danner.
Here.
Ron Stowe.
Here.
Hyland.
Here.
Hook.
Here. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong.
Please stand. Jim, did he come back or?
No, Bill, Bill Miles dropped off.
Okay. Lord God, today millions of Americans have cast their hope. We are blessed to live in a country where we are allowed to express our opinion and play a part in this process. No matter what the outcome, we Americans need to rally around our leadership in the federal, state, and local governments, especially here in Tonawanda. Instead of protesting and causing civil unrest, we should be gathering in the streets and rejoicing the blessing that you provide for us, no matter who we are. Tonight, we are faced with this pandemic. We are forced to make some very difficult decisions, both morally and financially for Tonawanda. We know that by coming to you in prayer, that you will guide the decisions made by this council. Let these decisions be what's right for Tonawanda. Bless council president Hook, the council representatives, our mayor, and all of the department heads and city employees who work hard to make your community a safe and great place to live, work, and play. Especially, we ask your blessings upon our fire and police departments. Keep them safe in whatever circumstances they may encounter. Finally, Lord God, we ask your blessings upon our neighbors and residents of this great city with good health and a protecting hand from all sickness, including COVID. We ask all of these blessings in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. Amen. May you see. I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Mayor Davis for proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor President. This time I'd like to call on Russell Ward, Senior Base Commander, Chapter 187 of the Military Order of Purple Heart.
Careful. Lots of warriors. How you doing? Lots of warriors.
Let's wait. Everybody will see. Just for a, a little point of, of information, um, Mr. Ward reached out to me, um, a few weeks ago about, proclaiming City of Tonawanda as a, a Purple Heart community. And being a veteran, this was important to me, um, but also knowing that, uh, we've had a former mayor, um, as a Purple Heart recipient and we've had countless other residents that are Purple Heart recipients here in the City of Tonawanda. So I thought it would be very fitting on the, um, meeting before Veterans Day to, uh, make this proclamation and, um, and invite, uh, Mr. Ward, um, here for the festivities. So without further ado, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Tonawanda has always supported its military population and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as a badge of military by General Washington in 1782. And whereas it was the first American service award or decoration available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat of a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And whereas the City of Tonawanda honors our decorated veteran population, including Purple Heart recipients. The city appreciates the sacrifices of our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it's important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the support they have earned. Now therefore be resolved that City of Tonawanda Mayor Rick Davis does hereby proclaim the City of Tonawanda as a Purple Heart designated city.
Mayor Davis, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Tremendously. To go further with patriotism, to show that and, uh, for the Purple Heart recipients and also for all veterans. Thank you very much. And I have this, uh, commendation plaque for you, that if you wish to display that. Do you want to take a picture of that?
Absolutely.
You're actually smiling to these lands.
Tom over here has a, uh, flag for you.
Okay, Mayor. On behalf of the, uh, Chapter 187 of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, I'd like to present this Purple Heart flag. Hopefully it'll be flown over, uh, City Hall.
Yes.
And especially with, uh, Veterans Day coming up.
Yes, most definitely. Thank you. This is an honor. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, a little bitter. Okay.
All right. One, two, and three. I'll take a couple. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you again, gentlemen. We will now have our public hearing on the 2021 general water and sewer operating budgets and the 2021 through 2025 capital plan. We'll now take comments by the public on the public hearing. For those that are joining us virtually, there is a spot for you to raise your hand and identify to the clerk that you wish to make a comment. We'll now take comments by the public on the 2021 general water and sewer operating budgets and the 2021 through 2025 capital plan. Any comments or questions? Jim, do you have any presence that identified they wish to speak?
Council President Cook, I have no, no one indicating they want to make a comment on the budget.
Last call. We'll now take comments by the public on the public hearing of the 2021 general water and sewer operating budget as well as the 2021 through 2025 capital plan. Any questions or comments? And I declare the public hearing closed. We'll now move forward. Communications from city officials and correspondents have been ordered and filed. We'll now take comments by the public on the resolutions. For those that are joining us virtually, there is a spot for you to raise your hand and identify to the clerk that you wish to speak. Anyone joining us can also approach the microphone as well. We're taking comments by the public on the resolutions. Jim, do you have anyone that desires to speak?
Again, Council President Cook, I have no one indicating they want to make a comment on any of the resolutions.
What's wrong?
Okay, resolution number one by the council, second by the council.
Answer questions. Please follow the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Kimmerdiner.
Aye.
Rautenstrau.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number two by Councilmember Kimmerdiner.
We have a second.
I'll take it, Madam President.
Second by Mr. Rautenstrau. It was you. Second by Mr. Mylum, I apologize.
It's okay.
Comments or questions?
Did you say?
Please follow the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Kimmerdiner.
Aye.
Rautenstrau.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number three by the council, second by the council.
Answer questions. Please follow the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Kimmerdiner.
Aye.
Rautenstrau.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number four by Council President Cook.
We have a second.
I'll second, Madam President.
Second by Mr. Newman. Answer your questions. Please follow the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Kimmerdiner.
Aye.
Rautenstrau.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted. We'll now take comments by the public following the resolutions. Please indicate to the clerk, you're joining us virtually, if you wish to address the council. Anyone wishing to address the council here can do so at this time. Any comments by the public following your resolutions? Jim, do you have anyone who's joining us virtually who wishes to address the council?
Council President Cook, I have no one indicating any comments from the members on the Zoom call.
Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick things. Saturday, we had a ribbon cutting ceremony at Consumers Beverage. I want to thank Council President Cook and Mayor Davis for coming to that event. It was, it was pretty nice, simple, but it's nice to have another business like that, you know, expanding in the city. And so it's very good. And trunk or treat, that was this event on Friday, and that was, that was going to be about 215 kids come through the cars. About two hours. It was, it was another really, really nice, nice event. It was good to see the kids dressed up as much as they could in a car. But it was, it was fun. I want to thank Councilmember Kimmerdiner for attending that as well and for putting together all the bags, 300 of them. So it was, thank you, Don. That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Kimmerdiner. Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to thank everybody for the trunk or treat on Friday. It was a nice, fun event. I'd like to give a shout out to the mayor's assistant who, needless to say, scared a couple of the young kids, but they all had fun. The other thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank Joe Polino for coming in with his proposal for what potentially could be another new business here in the City of Tonawanda. I'd like to thank Mr. Rautenstrau for his proposed budget that he's worked diligently on along with all of us. I want to move forward with that hopefully soon rather than later, so that our residents don't really have to have a six and a half percent property tax. Our treasurer, with all the department heads involved, kind of stepped in and worked diligently on this budget as well. So that's all I have, Madam President.
And Mr. Rautenstrau.
Thank you. You know, I do want to welcome Joe and definitely tag on that. It's great to see a new opportunity, new businesses in our, in our city. Welcome you to our city and thanks for your consideration. One other thing I'd like to do is, you know, thank you to our fire police and our auxiliary police for your presence and controlling the on with car period during Halloween. You know, as, as, as I was concerned about roads closed or not, we looked at about 500 people, 500 kids to our doors on that night. It was nice that the streets were closed. They were spread out. Unlike previous years, we didn't see the huge crowds walking around. It was a steady flow of traffic and a good number of people. And it was, it was great to have these who have, you know, kids from around our city and our neighborhood. I thank the rest of my, my neighborhood for participating. There's some great jobs out there. I saw almost as many lights on this year as I have in previous years. Participation was great. And the presence of our auxiliary police and our police and our fire police was amazing. From blocking the streets, directing traffic, making sure people were wearing masks, making sure people were going in the right direction, driving up and down the street in the golf carts to watch out for everybody and make sure there were no incidences. It was, it was great to see. So thank you very much, and thank you to the council for indulging my request on closing the street as well. I think it worked out well, and I think it was a matter of public safety. I also newly have been appointed to the Police Reform Committee. I just wanted to kind of speak to that. I'm thankful to be a part of it. I think it's a really great process. It's, it's come down from New York, take opinions and to see how we can improve our police department. You know, the committee itself is built with a lot of great people. I've, I've seen them on Facebook. I've, you know, met them in person. And I think they're, they offer some great contributions into this committee. One of, one of the great things that I did notice is we talked about a lot of the, the issues that we want to address and want to talk about. I think what comes along is that a lot of these things are already being done by our police department, that they're in accredited police force. They have a certain amount of training and they really do a great job at what they do. And a lot of these things are addressing it. There's a huge amount of feedback that we can get. There was, I want to say there was 500 responses on the survey. And you know, to that, it's been shared around on Facebook. It's put out there. There's flyers that are going up in public buildings. You know, if you hit the website, answer the questions, it's the beginning of the process. Right now, it's, it's, it's kind of vague. They're not, you know, A, B, or C, or D questions. It's asking for some input from the community, asking for your thoughts on it, what your experiences are with our police department, where you could see some improvements, where you think they could be better utilized. And it's a great opportunity to speak up, speak to your own experiences with them and make your suggestions. From there, they, they're going to continue to narrow in on some of these to ask some better questions and direct these in ways that they can do a little better for the community. I think that is all I have on my plate, other than thank you guys for indulging me, for listening to me on my budget suggestions. I hope it is something that we can all work together, come into an agreement on, and hopefully pass on some savings to our, our residents through this year. And you know, bigger picture, forest in the trees, you know, pass on these savings and benefits over, over the course of the following year and the years after that and come up with a plan. I mean, we're, we're all here for a couple of years while we serve. It's, it's important for us to build a foundation for whoever takes over for us when they take over, to have something to work off of. So I appreciate all of your input on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rautenstrau. Mr. Mylum.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mylum. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just like to remind everybody, Veterans Day, November 11th to 11:00 AM, Renaissance Bridge of ceremonies commemorating that day. If you're available, please, I'm sure you're excited for elections in our community. Like to thank my administrative assistant, it's Councilperson Kimmerdiner, for his efforts in organizing the drive through the tree event. We're hoping that next year we possibly expand it a little bit, make it an actual trunk or treat. People seem to have a great time and couldn't think of anything better to do on Friday night. And last, if you didn't know, Election Day. There are an hour and forty minutes to vote. And regardless of what the outcome is, I think we need to come together as a nation to tackle some of the issues that, that are out there. But I wanted to share a story. I was always working as an election inspector at the border today. And there was a 91-year-old gentleman came down to vote for the very first time ever. And was, was humbled that that he felt it was important to have his voice heard this year in this election. So hopefully we either pre-voted or voted or going to vote here within the next hour and a half. That's all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I love that story. Thanks for sharing. You know, as the mayor said, yes, there's still time to vote. Election Day is important to all of us. And it's our chance to have our voice heard, and I would encourage everybody, if you have not had the opportunity to vote, clock's ticking, but there's still time. So if you're watching us, please, you know, find your polling location and get out and cast that ballot. I do want to thank Councilmember Newman for putting together the ribbon cutting ceremony. It was a nice turnout. We even had some customers come up to us and ask us where they could locate some, some of their finest drinks. So it was a great time. I welcome consumers to the city. I want to thank Joe for meeting with the council tonight. I look forward to continuing to work with him and seeing if there's some opportunities in the city for him to develop. I want to give a shout out to our city treasurer. He's actually traveling. And today is his 30th wedding anniversary, so I want to congratulate him and his beautiful wife, Tina. Also, congratulations to both of you, and thank you, Bill, for, for hanging out with us on your anniversary, and we really appreciate it. You know, and there's been a lot of challenges with COVID, just with how we present our council meetings. We, we've made some changes up here. We're obviously wearing masks. We have sanitizer. The room is clean. And from the get-go, we thought it was very important for us to be transparent and you know, have an opportunity for our residents to join us virtually. So I, you know, I want to give a shout out to our city clerk as well, Jim Caso, just with the challenges of setting up the Zoom meetings and making sure all of our microphones and our speakers are, are set. I know we've, you know, each and every week we are improving, but you know, our clerk has done such a fantastic job in being able to broadcast these meetings so our residents can, you know, catch them live or come back and review those meetings at their leisure. So thank you, Jim. I know there's a lot of work that goes into this even before each council member sits at their designated area, but you've done such a fantastic job in, you know, ensuring that our meetings are made virtual for all of our residents. So I really appreciate you, and you know, you're, you're one of the unsung heroes. So, so thank you very much. And with that said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam President.
Second by Mr. Kimmerdiner. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a great night, everybody.
What's that?
For everyone that's on the Zoom call, the Zoom call will be ending. Thank you for the Zoom call. Take care to our next meeting.